The regular city council meeting for June 21st, 2018 is called to order at 7:33 PM. The city clerk is not here. Judy Johnson is sitting in for Nicole Lee. Madam Clerk, the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Councilman Benton, absent. Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Chief Walker.
Mayor.
Chief St. Seer. St. Seer. And Attorney Gilbert Buress.
Present.
Ms. Lindellulu is absent.
I have a few open and comments. As everyone knows, if you follow Facebook, you live in the city, live in the 70123 area, talk to your neighbors, family, that everyone's been complaining about odor issues. I just completed a small briefing on the phone with Jefferson Parish, the city of Harahan, Jefferson Parish, and the state are going to be coming together and coordinating efforts to track down the odors. What is gonna happen? They're gonna have a stationary unit placed at Riverside Baptist, which will record wind direction and speed. They will also have mobile units that will travel along Jefferson Highway from Clearview to the Kenner City limits. Those mobile units will be responding to 911 calls from residents if they have complaints of odor. They will have vacuum canisters onboard so that if there's an odor that's pungent that they can capture in those vacuum canisters, they will capture it. It will go to the state for analyzation. Also, the state is providing mammal. It is a mobile air monitoring lab for our use and disposal. So, I'm very excited that our residents, our community, has really brought this to the fore and that we are coordinating these efforts with, with the state and Jefferson Parish. I'm thrilled that we will now be able to use 911 and we will have real-time wind direction and speed in the 70123 area, our area in River Ridge. So, this is really good news as far as that goes. I'm also very proud to announce that Harahan has been ranked number one, like we didn't already know it, best place to live in Louisiana for 2018. So, that is great, great news for the city. I'd also like to send out some congratulations to Michael Amadio and his wife. They are new parents to a new baby girl. Michael is the chairman on our planning and zoning board, and we are very happy for his service and welcome a new resident to the city. I'd also like to just briefly tell you some good news, financial audit highlights. The city has totally eliminated the $1.25 million deficit inherited from 2004, and we no longer teeter toward deficit spending.
Fourteen.
Right, from fourteen.
Fourteen.
Did I say?
You said four.
Oh, sorry, 2014. Thank you for correcting me. The, last year, we thought we had gotten out of the deficit by 25,000. The audit readjusted that number to 65,000 for last year, meaning the 2000, uh, audit for 2016. 2017 closure, the general fund has a positive balance of $391,413. That is a feat. And a combined fund balance, meaning the sewer fund, capital fund, and the general fund, a combined balance of $1,344,221. The city is in its healthiest position since the last, since over the last eight years. During this time, the last several years, we've also seen a decrease, significant decrease in our debt, so we are definitely heading in the right direction. It is quite a size, the audit itself, it may take some doing, but we'll try and get it posted on the website. The website's got an old operating system that isn't so conducive for bulky items. We will now go to special presentations. Darlene Schwartz.
Mayor, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and break into executive session.
Oh, sure. You did say that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to move to go into executive session by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor. I have four yays, zero nays. We'll move to go to executive. The council has now returned from executive session to consider litigation, potential litigation, and no decisions were made in executive session. I'd also like to ask the council to amend the agenda to add, under special presentations, Mr. Jack Capella for an update on what's happening.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays. The agenda is amended.
Is everyone's mic on? Number three or number one?
Can you hear?
We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, I'm closer, thank you.
He's number one?
He's gonna be a three.
Three.
Oh, we can make him number one.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
I'd also wanted to tell everyone that the city has forged a very wonderful relationship with Senator John Kennedy's office. His director, Mary Schlesinger, did I say it right? Please stand up. He's here with us today. Dr. Kennedy, Senator Kennedy, has been very generous with loaning his talents that he's hired in his office with Mary. We have been in consult on a number of issues. He has, I, I talk to her often about how much I respect how he handles meetings on Capitol Hill, and that when they get very frustrating and a little combative, or there's a lot of angst, it is Senator John Kennedy who can always make everyone smile and laugh, and he's got some great one-liners that will go down, I think, in current history. I'd also, before special presentations, just want to let everyone know that there will be a Heroes Action Gala. It is gonna be Saturday, the 21st, at the camp on Hickory. It's 2317 Hickory. It's to honor our first responders. It is $40 per person, or 75 for a couple, and it includes dinner, and the doors open at 5:00, and I hope everyone will consider.
That's an old one.
Twenty-five.
Oh, it's 25?
Yes.
Even better news. Thank you very, very much.
Even at the gate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we will go to special presentations. Mr. Jack Capella, if you would come up.
Thank you very much.
We didn't wanna go past your bedtime, so we moved you up on the.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of council. I asked to get a quick recognition tonight because I received a number of phone calls about the ongoing situation over on Colonial and the temporary fence that has been put up. So, I came tonight just to express my appreciation for the call from the mayor, a call from Councilman Baudier, and we, we have a small black fence up right now because they are draining the pond. It will be moved to a more, to further away from Colonial to protect that area where we're working for the movement of the dirt. I know it's a bit unsightly right now, and it, it just takes a little time to get through this, so on behalf of Colonial, I apologize if it caused any inconvenience to the people on Colonial, and we're going to eventually be able to move that fence and put up a temporary fence, simply because those equipment back there is so big, and while they're working, we're gonna ask that people stay off that portion where they're working. Obviously, we still, you know, allowing anyone that wants to go on the other side, back, on the backside of it, to use the facilities as they have been doing in the past. I was also asked about a parking, a.
Actually, the, the parish has decided on a location. It was about the mobile unit. I reached out to JW Colonial, I called Mr. Capella, and he graciously offered to let that unit be located on Colonial. However, powers that be above us have decided for a different location, and should we need you again, I'll.
Well, I appreciate that, and again, as, as we're going forward, you're going, there's, concerns about the use of Colonial and access egress. As soon as we can get the, is it Wainwright entrance completed, that will be, all traffic will be alleviated and off of the, off of Colonial. We will move the fence as soon as we can to just protect it. We're not trying to keep anybody out, but for your own safety, we'd ask that while those big machines are working there, leveling the grounds and getting them ready, we'd ask that people, you know, our insurance carrier and the, obviously, the contractor is, has a responsibility to protect the area. So, I just went by there before I came. I met with the contractor on there. We hope to move that fence line as quickly as possible, and then we'll, we will have a temporary fence up, a construction fence, while they are leveling the ground. If I can also, Ms. Mayor, for her indulgence, like to thank the chief. We've had a number of situations over there. We had a gas leak that someone smelled, and, and we found out it was a leaking old pipe that we had to, so we pulled the gas meter. I was informed by Mr. Shadale that we had some kinda electrical issues over there. As we're going through this, some of this predates all of us. We're not, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how to make it as quickly as possible and as easy as possible to get through this project, particularly this first phase. So, chief, I do appreciate that your, your men have been out there, and if something happens, we have somebody 24/7 on-call. We'll respond whenever you want, Ms. Mayor. You've called us, we, you know, and we appreciate it. If there's something that you think we need to do or, or know about, please remember that the contractor is a man that is hired by the assisted living people, so he works for them, but we're the ultimate responsible. So, any problems, come to me or come to Mr. Georges or Mr. Dakota, no matter what they are, whether they do 'em or somebody else does 'em, and we'll move to rectify 'em as quickly as possible.
I was hoping, I'll talk to you about another issue tomorrow.
No, I'm sure. And, and as to all of them, all you all, I appreciate you all, you know, giving me a call and giving a heads up. I can't anticipate everything that's gonna happen out there. I have been going out on a regular basis. We have somebody out there virtually all day watching that, to, to ensure that the construction is done correctly and it doesn't interfere with those lives of the people on Colonial or the access egress onto Jefferson Highway. Ultimately, I think it's going to be a beautiful project. It's not quite as pretty as we would like it is right now.
Thank you.
Any questions, any comments? I'll be happy to answer any concerns. This is a, you know, this is the first phase. This is leveling the, the property, the building will start to go up, the assisted living, and we will continue to, to present our plans to the city and, and get your approval as council to keep going on what we promised you will be absolutely fabulous. At the end of the day, it's gonna be a fabulous project for Harahan, and I think it's gonna lift everybody up.
If they could move the portable restrooms a little.
Yeah, I saw that. You didn't mention that today, Mayor, but.
I was gonna save that till tomorrow, but I.
No, actually, Councilman Hewitt has already informed me that that was not quite what, what was expected.
Rain vision.
Yes, that, so we will, we'll address that issue as possible. The problem was, we were originally going to just keep them all in the back with the clubhouse, but the clubhouse presents a lot of security issues that the chief and I have gone over about. If you put anybody in there, then you open up a whole, you know, a hornet's nest of opportunities. So, we'll, I, I did see that today, and, and the councilman let me know, so I will, I'll, I'll gently remind everybody tomorrow.
Thank you. And if you would just, if you let me know, I'll send out a, you know.
Okay.
Email to the council and everyone.
Any questions? Craig?
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Schwartz?
Our community liaison. Good evening, council, mayor, and citizens. I'm really brief tonight. Mayor kinda stole my thunder with the announcement of, at the camp, but that's okay, so I'll, real quickly. The gentleman in the back has a really neat tee-shirt for the first 150 people that attend, I believe, if you'd like to stand up. It's Heroes in Action, and it's really a nice tee-shirt that I support first responders. So, again, 25 bucks over at the camp, doors open at noon this Saturday. It's gonna be hotter than you-know-what, but, hey, we can tolerate it. And I'd like to just say, the majority of the money is gonna benefit our Harahan Police Department and our Harahan Fire Department, and then a small portion is gonna go to the Gretna and Weswego Police Department. So, I mean, great cause, good food, door prizes, silent auction. Again, doors open at noon this Saturday, 25 bucks, okay? So, thanks. The only other things I'd like to mention, and I've said this before, driving up and down the streets of Harahan, we love our community, and it's really safe. I still see unattended kids, children, riding bikes, running around, and I know we don't really have a big issue here, or haven't had an issue, and we never want an issue with somebody's kid disappearing. Please keep an eye on 'em. I mean, in my mind, when I'm driving, I'm looking, and I'm thinking, how long would it take for me to scoop this kid up and be outta sight, outta mind, before somebody realizes they're gone? And it, it does, it, it just makes me really nervous, so just like to mention that, okay?
Have you noticed if everybody's wearing their helmets?
No. Helmets, no. Bicycles.
I'm just gonna reiterate, that's a personal issue. I've talked to everyone about our cousin who was hit by a vehicle while cycling. He had to get readmitted just recently to the hospital. It's very serious, those injuries, and anything you can do to protect yourself, your children, your loved ones, please wear helmets when you're, you're cycling.
The other thing, I'm already getting questions about the next Drug Prescription Takeback Day, which will probably takes place sometime in October, I'm thinking. If you have stuff, please hang on to it. We do this with the Drug Enforcement Administration every six months, and we just had one in April. For some reason, I'm starting to get a lot of inquiries, when is the next one? I missed the last one. We do use Rite Aid, that's getting ready to get converted to a Walgreens. I've talked to the manager. She assures me we're still gonna be able to use that as a drop-off point, and so nothing should change there. So, please, just hang on to your stuff, and we wanna make sure we dispose of that in a proper way. And that's it, folks. Y'all can carry on and go through your list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Walker?
Good evening, mayor, council, viewing public. Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. First, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of the New Orleans Field Office of the Drug Enforcement Administration. Here's a presentation to make for several of our Harahan police officers in regards to a case that was made not too long ago. Agent Michael Sabre.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Mayor Misselli, council members, Chief Walker, I appreciate you guys allowing me to be here tonight. I've been asked to represent, on behalf of DEA, Sergeant Tommy Bronck, Sergeant Nick Lieber, and Detective David Darwin tonight. It's always a privilege for me to have a chance to recognize fellow law enforcement officers, and it's, it's an opportunity to honor these three officers for their exemplary service to the community of Harahan and the outstanding contributions that they've made to DEA. So, for the next few minutes, I'd like to share with you what happens when devoted police officers such as these gentlemen here serve their communities in a selfless manner, sacrifice their own well-being to ensure that all of us remain safe and secure. I'd also like to emphasize that what happens when different law enforcement agencies collaborate together as one team, the common goal of eliminating crime and making our communities a pleasant place, a pleasant place to live and work is, is always the paramount goal for us in law enforcement. And with this particular incident, this investigation that they've all conducted, you can be assured that the city of Harahan is in good hands. I have to admit that when this case took place, I hadn't yet reported to New Orleans, and I was asked to come here tonight, so I said, "Well, you know, what's the case about?" And I got a case synopsis, which I'll, I'll share with all of you, and I'll go over some of the highlights, but I couldn't help but marvel when I was going through the case, how diligent these officers, officers were, and the actions that they took and the investigation that they, they allowed to happen really expanded into anything more than any of us would've imagined. And as I read through some of the highlights, you guys will just kind of appreciate what they did, and there's, there's never a routine call. When you, when you, when you go to a call, when you get a call, as a police officer, they always say, "Well, it's a routine police call," but there's, there's really no such thing as a routine police call, and as I go through some of the facts of this investigation, I think you guys will appreciate the fact that you just never know when you stop a car, when you open up a door in a house, what you're gonna come across. So, beginning in January 16th, 2016, Harahan Police Department received a call for a domestic dispute at the home of a lady named Dr. Leah Fricki. The first to respond was Sergeant Thomas Bronck, and he had received the call. He approached the residence in an attempt to investigate the complaint. As soon as he got to the front door, there was an individual by the name of Stephen Osborne opened the door and greeted the sergeant, and as soon as he had seen, sorry, as soon as he had seen the sergeant, he, he re-entered the residence, and he immediately grabbed a weapon and started placing ammunition into a magazine, into a semi-automatic pistol. Subsequently, Osborne was taken into custody without any incident, and the officers, additional officers showed up on scene, and they met a female who was identified as Dr. Fricki, and she actually ended up being a Louisiana licensed physician. Dr. Fricki told the other officers who arrived on scene that there was other firearms inside the residence and other individuals inside the residence. So, immediately, the officers, for the safety of the officers and everyone else inside the home, they began to go from room to room and check the house out throughout the residence, and they identified another individual named Cadence Sinclair. And as they continued to search the residence, they would continue to find additional firearms. They would smell the odor of marijuana. They found prescription drugs and other drug paraphernalia. They also went into a rear bedroom, found another backpack, which had a loaded .45 Glock caliber pistol, marijuana, and some additional US currency. And again, this was just a call for a domestic disturbance, and you never know, again, what's gonna happen as, as things progress in any situation. So, obviously, with everything that the officers had found, Mr. Osborne and Mr. Sinclair were taken into custody at the scene, and after the officers discovered the other drug paraphernalia and the prescription medicines, Sergeant Bronck requested the assistance of Detective David Darwin to arrive on scene to help further investigate. Upon Detective Darwin's arrival, he took into custody all the drugs, the weapons, the money. He subsequently contacted Task Force Officer John Driscoll, and Mr. Driscoll requested the assistance of DEA. So, right away, within a very short time period, you have a call for a domestic disturbance where you have an individual who answers the door, runs back in the house, grabs a weapon, starts to load the weapon. Officers go in to apprehend that person, smell marijuana, see other guns, see other individuals, find prescription medicines throughout the house, and it's no longer a domestic disturbance call. It's, it's a complete police other investigation. It's now to weapons investigation, a drug investigation, and, and that's when the DEA was invited to come and assist with the police officers. So, as that investigation pursued, Dr. Fricki was charged with drug possession and weapons possession, and subsequently, I believe, a month later, and actually, two months later in March, Dr. Fricki turned herself into the Jefferson Parish Correctional Center, where she was arrested and booked. In May of that year, May of 2016, Dr. Fricki, her, her medical license was suspended, pending further investigation. At some point, Dr. Fricki traveled to Tangipahoa Parish, where she was arrested by the Tangipahoa Sheriff's Department after she had gotten into a fight with the deputy and hit him with a stick. So, within a week or two of that, Dr. Fricki, she actually had her, so she had her, and you have to understand that when you're in that, that line of work, there's different licenses for different things. She had, her, her medical license was suspended, and then she also lost her, her controlled dangerous and drug license where she's allowed to distribute medications. That was suspended. So, as the case progressed, Detective Darwin, Sergeant Nick Lieber, and the DEA Tactical Divergent Squad here in New Orleans, they, they prepare an order, it's called an order to show cause, and basically, it's an order that we submit throughout DEA to prevent doctors who are dispensing medicines without any medical reason. It's a way for us to suspend them from doing that. So, we, we, along with the police officers and the detectives, moved to show order to revoke Dr. Fricki's DEA registration, so she could no longer dispense medication. That was in July, and we fast-forward to February 2017, Dr. Fricki was back in Tangipahoa, where she was actually committing additional crimes, and she was finally committed as a mentally disturbed person. And then, in February of 2017, the DEA administrator, who has the only sole authority to revoke license, finally did revoke Dr. Fricki's medical license, her, her registration to dispense medicines and any prescription drugs. And throughout this entire period of time, Detective Darwin, Sergeant Lieber, and the Tactical Divergent Squad within DEA continued to investigate Dr. Fricki. Subsequently, based on the work that these gentlemen did, police officers within your community, who had responded to a, again, a routine domestic disturbance call, because of the work they did, we got a 12-count indictment from the Jefferson Parish District Attorney's Office against Dr. Fricki. Since the indictment, the 12-count indictment with Dr. Fricki, she's been on the run. She never, showed up for her initial appearance, and I think we have an idea where she might be, again, along with the Harahan Police Department and with the DEA. We're following up on leads. She's, she's somewhere within the state, and I don't think she's gonna get too far, but she has no means to support herself at this point, since we've taken away all her license. But the important part of what I wanted to share with you all is you have, you have outstanding police officers in this community, and for them to sacrifice themselves to, to do what they do, their diligence, their training, the experience that they, that they get as, as police officers, to, to take everything that they've learned and to sacrifice what they have to protect all of you, it was important for us, as an agency for DEA, to acknowledge that, and I can tell you, as a federal agent, we can't function and do our job. And I can tell you, as a federal agent, we can't function and do our job properly without officers like this, without task force officers, without police officers in a community like these gentlemen here. It would be very difficult for DEA to do their job. So as DEA's representative, I'd like to acknowledge their work, and I'd like to present them with some certificates. The first one I have, and they're all the same, it's a certificate of appreciation from the Drug Enforcement Administration. This one here is for Tommy Bronck. Nick Lieber? Yeah. And I have another one for David Darwin. Oh, yes, sir. Without the glasses, right? Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
And we appreciate your work as a DEA.
Thank you. Appreciate it. [applause]
Taking his report.
Checking you out.
He's taking his report.
I think what they were trying to say is, this doctor lived in Harahan, but had a, call it a pill clinic, these people that go that need pain medication, and it put her out of business. These people are charging, they were from $200 to $300 a visit to get prescriptions to buy legally abused drugs. And by this investigation that started off as a small, as you say, domestic violence, put this doctor out of business, you know? And they curtail some of the drugs illegally going on the street that are being resold and abused. So they did a fine job. I'd also like to present our Harahan Police Department attorney, give us a little update, Steve Pettit. You want to do a, no? Okay, all right.
Chief, do you mind if I just ask, where did this occur in Harahan?
I'm sorry?
Where did this occur in Harahan with Dr. Fricki?
On Jefferson Highway across from Robers. It was a single family residence on Jefferson Highway, and it started in, through pursuing the investigation, and I said she was a medical doctor. And it's hard to believe somebody goes through that much training, schooling, the amount of money to go through school with, you know, student loans and to sacrifice that, and it happens quite frequently. The division that the officer up front was, and we have another officer assigned to that task force, that's what they do. They follow up on these pill clinics where people are abusing. I guess in a nutshell, a lot of people have physical injuries or operations, and they need medication. They're on the medication. And as I've been reading in the paper, the doctors are now cutting back on the prescriptions. Well, they're addicted to it. Nobody gets them off this addiction, so the next place they go is the legal way, is these pill clinics, these doctors that are selling pain management, they're selling prescriptions. And like I said, they're worth from $200 to $300 a pop, cash. They're making a ton of money. So as DEA is closing these pill clinics down, where do they go? They're going on street. Right now, heroin is prevalent throughout this country. It's a major epidemic. I've never seen it like this before. We're running across a few cases in Harahan. It's everywhere. I mean, there's an article in the paper today about two inmates in Angola overdosing, you know, figure, in the state penitentiary overdosing from drugs. So it's everywhere. It's all money-driven. And I say, schools getting ready to open in a few weeks. We got the three schools in Harahan, Harahan Elementary, St. Rita, and Faith Lutheran. Be aware that children and school zones will be enforced. In the last probably four to six weeks, we've had two houses where packages have been taken off the front porch. If you can have a, if you're not going to be home, you have a neighbor or a friend can pick up the package. Again, as I said before, if you see anything suspicious, don't hesitate to either call 911 or call a station. Try and get a description. Do not confront anybody. Call us, and we'll come out and check the people out and see if everything's okay. And also about the house numbers, we're still running across that a lot of people, when you get home, check your house numbers. Make sure they're correct, they're in the right position. Sometimes a screw on there will fall out in the numbers, a six might turn into a non. And at the lit at nighttime, seconds count first responders, especially police fire and EMTs, you know? So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Address the council. Anyone who would like to come up and address the council, please do so. You have three minutes. I am also mayor and timekeeper, so let me get this going, and...
Mayor, before we start, I'd like to just make a motion just for this tonight, because I'm sure a couple people will get up and have a speech. If we can just, I'd like to motion for five minutes for everybody on, address the council.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler.
Second.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I looked at her.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yea's, zero nay's. Motion passes.
Good afternoon, council. Been a big week. This week's going to be really exciting, and we look forward to having all the residents attend this event. It's been a lot of work, very tiring, very sleepless nights, restless nights trying to put this together. I just want to give you an update, where we stand at, what we need still, not much. So far, we've collected $4,600. Well, we've collected a little more, that's what we have in the bank, 4,629. Total collected at the store, we've collected about 1,200 bucks. I've taken out a little over 10,000 of my own personal money off my credit card to make this happen, and it's very costly. I mean, so I'm just giving you guys an update. We've spent $3,400 on Vince Vance. So that brings us about 1,200 in the bank, 1,229 in the bank, and then, of course, we've had some miscellaneous expenses that's come out. So I'll give you guys an update after everything's over. It's all going to be in details. I don't have all the receipts here, but I just want to let you know where we stand at with everything that's been brought in and what we're doing. We have the ice truck, we have chairs coming in, we have a couple new entertainers that's going to be taking place between that 12 and 6 that I'm bringing in, so we don't have a big void there. So that's pretty much it. What I need to ask with the mayor's office, I know we talked about the barricades to rope off, because we have some VIP sections for people that are paying 100 bucks. We have food for them. We don't want people that's paying $25 to come eat all their food. So we want to rope off that section for that.
Didn't my staff get back to you today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've kind of got that taken care of. Also, I've spoke with the chief about bringing, if we can have a couple additional offices in the facility, if we can work that out and get that done. The last thing I wanted to ask is if we can put up a sign on Jefferson Highway in Hickory, if that would be an issue, just promoting the event, put it up tomorrow night or tomorrow and take it down Saturday night. Would that be a problem, or is there special permits? How would that work?
There's a, there's a law about signs on right-ofways.
Okay.
That it's not permitted. I wish we could help get out.
That's not a big deal, just thought I asked. I know in Jefferson Parish, you have to get an ordinance for it, but I didn't know how it worked in Harahan. No big deal.
We'll help as much as we can to...
Not a problem.
Get the word out.
So, I mean, pretty much, the only thing we need is you guys to spread the word.
You can put it up my house.
There we go.
Along the highway.
There we go. You know, just something we need. We would like to just really promote this and get, we want to make this a success. We're expecting 500 people. And I want to also thank Mr. Tim for donating these wonderful shirts that are comfortable. I couldn't help but not wear it tonight. And it's very comfortable. We're going to sell some of the shirts, you know, so we can bring some additional cash. So we've decided to do, I guess that's okay with you, the first 150 shirts, a few people that come in will get a shirt, and then after that, we'll sell the remaining shirts for a cause, and, you know, hey, just letting people know. We need to let people know that we care about our first responders. And, you know, it's just, I'm so sick of hearing bashing and bad-mouthing of our first responders, because when, at the end of the day, do they have bad days? Yes. Are they human? Do they make mistakes? Yes. But at the end of the day, when we're running away from danger, they're running into danger. And so these guys are true heroes, and that's why we called it Heroes in Action Day, because we're going to recognize these guys, because they put their life on the line every single day. They don't know if they're going to come home tonight or tomorrow. And so with that, again, I want to give them a big round of applause because of that. Because... So, you know, I've actually decided, tomorrow's actually my birthday, and I've donated my birthday. Instead of doing something for myself, I do it for our first responders.
Happy birthday.
And thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, guys. Thanks for everybody attending. I got my mom, they wanted to go sit outside, so I'm going to have to run, but I'll leave...
May 21, just in time for the fundraiser.
I turned 40. I'm getting old. But I'm going to leave some flowers on the back table, if it's okay. If anybody wants to pick up, please, write this on Facebook, let everybody know, let's get the word out, because this is going to be a big event. It's exciting, I'm excited. Vince Vance is going to put on a show like you've never seen before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terri Valenti, 191 Colonial Club Drive. I am responding to Mr. Baudier's political speech that he gave at the last meeting. Mr. Baudier, I sat with rapt attention when I heard your political speech at the last meeting. It boggles the mind that you are trying to take credit for anything good that may or may not happen with colonial property. I remind you that you have voted in favor of the wealthy landowners at each vote presented to you. If it were not for you, Mr. Baudier, Ms. Hewitt, Ms. Wheeler, and Mr. Johnston, the residents who live next to that property would never have had to be concerned or worry about what would be across from them or next to them. It would have been houses, because the residents were begging you not to change the zoning from residential to commercial, but you voted for it, and you voted for every subsequent vote in favor of the landowners. Because all, I'm sorry, wait a minute. For you to now come and publicly state that you got together with one of the neighbors and worked out a positive outcome for all of the residents is just ludicrous. And that's not even taking into consideration that that one homeowner that you claim you worked to deal with is someone that you have publicly ridiculed and embarrassed at many I don't even have time to go there, except to say that it just is mind-boggling that you would get up and claim that you have a working relationship with him now. If you do, then you indeed could part the Red Sea, because I don't think he's forgotten what you have done to him. And it also, more importantly, calls attention to the fact that you claim to have worked out something positive with one resident, but you have never asked me what I wanted, and you haven't asked my neighbors, with the exception of the one neighbor you said you talked to. You don't, to this day, know what I wanted. You cannot claim to helping the residents on colonial when it's by your own actions that we ever had to worry. You created the problem for us, you did not solve it. About your emails between you and Councilman Benton, while you wanted to shine some sort of positive light on yourself, you have only provided more proof of self-serving politician that you really are. You were so rabid to read Ms. Benton's angry email to you and hopefully embarrass her, but you also read her very earnest apology to you. You read your acceptance of that apology, but you also turned around and used it against her at a public meeting. So who is embarrassed? Ms. Benton, who spoke her mind privately to you and then apologized for her anger, or you, who stammered through the reading of it to exact some sort of retribution? Mr. Baudier, you didn't even realize that what you read was evidence of Ms. Benton's tireless efforts to save as much green space on colonial property as possible. She's a real citizens' councilperson, not a self-serving politician who has bowed to the will of wealthy outside landowners with each and every vote. You need to get yourself together. Your attempt to ignore your nine-and-a-half-year record and promote yourself in a delusional schizophrenic manner is not helping you. Try answering the questions that I presented to you. If you are proud of your record, you should be happy to answer those questions. If you have nothing to hide, hide nothing.
I'm here tonight to announce my candidacy for Harahan City Councilman seat. I'm asking for your support and your vote. My wife of 40 years, Jackie, and I have been Harahan residents for 31 years. Our children were raised here, they live here. I base my decision around my desire just to give something back to a city that's been so good to us. And I believe Harahan can become an even better city, better for my family, for future families, and for families for generations to come. I believe we can create an environment where civility, trust, ethics, transparency, and professionalism are defining characteristics of city government. I really believe that, and I'll do everything in my power, if elected, to make it happen. I have over 40 years of experience, executive experience, in leadership roles, finance, accounting, complex transactions, contract negotiations, dispute resolution, operations, risk management, insurance, and strategic planning. I've learned how to build successful teams. I've served in various positions, chief financial officer, chief administrative officer, president, senior vice president, executive vice president, treasurer, and certified public accountant for private companies and public companies. I'm a proud United States Navy veteran, Naval Security Group, had a top-secret clearance at one time. I'm a graduate of a public high school and a public university, the University of New Orleans. I'm also a certified public accountant and active. Again, I'm asking for your support. I'll be making announcements shortly, outlining my views and platforms. In the meantime, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to call me, Thank you.
My name is Paulette Zerang, and I live at number four Chris Law in Harahan. I want to take this opportunity first. I want to thank the mayor, councilman, and especially the Reeds. The road is gone, it's back by the river. I have no more sand, no more noise, and my house doesn't rock and roll anymore. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you, Judge. It came to my attention, there was Harahan news, that there are some work being done on the parks and recreation departments. One of the things I want to thank you for is for the Zerang Park. I know they did some, put some beautiful equipment, did some work and all, and I really, really appreciate it. The Zerang family, thanks you. I want to give you a little history of the Zerang Park. The Zerang Park was named for my father, my husband's... The Zarang Park was named for my father, my husband's father, Mr. Charles Zarang. Ms. Josephine Rue Zarang lost two of their sons during World War II. Uncle Felix and Uncle Alex. Philippe and Felix. And the benefits that we received, that they received, they donated to the city and sent reed and church monies. And then, in favor of that, they dedicated the Zarang Park to Uncle Philip and Uncle Felix. And this is a picture of Aunt, you know, Aunt Trudy. This is when they, it's the park. I want y'all to compare it down. You can see...
I want a copy of it.
The park means a lot to the Zarang family. And when I say Zarang family, I'm talking about the Nichols. I'm talking about the Widdies. I'm talking about the Four Stalls. I'm talking about all the Mr. Zarangs brothers and sisters, all of his siblings, his mom and dad. They're talking about probably making, doing more work at the park. It's about a dog park. I would like you all to consider. And it was dedicated already to veterans. I would like to see, and I think the family would like to see, a memorial garden. Some quiet meditation memorial garden where we can... Because it's a small place. It's not really big enough for a dog park and everything else. But it's a nice meditation garden. I know they have one on Hickory, and they have one on River Road, by Slavey and Jefferson Highway. And it's just a little meditation park. It's pretty. And I thought it would be lovely to have some kind of a memorial in that park to honor the young men and women from Harrahann. I'm talking about who we have taken our husbands and brothers and sisters and aunts and uncles. And they have dedicated their service to the United States. I'd like to see them honored. This would be a wonderful way. And because it would make, it would be an honor to his family, to his uncles, to his father, and especially my husband Charlie, who was a Vietnamese, Vietnamese veteran. I want to thank you. If y'all could consider this. And I want to thank you for all the intentions and concerns you all have for us. Thank you all so, so much.
Thank you, Ms. Zarang.
Ms. Paulette. Ms. Paulette, I just wanted to tell you that I've had a little dream conversation with a resident about repurposing in honor of your family with honoring the people who have served our country. We're tossing around some ideas next week, and I'd like to personally ask you to come and meet with us. I've got some wish lists. I'm sure you do, too. And then, we'll put some ideas together. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Andrew Case, 7412 Ashborn. So, I had no intention of actually speaking tonight. I was expecting a line of like twenty people announcing their candidacy. So, I typed up a few notes in my phone just to kind of guide me. But I'm truly disappointed that there's no update from the city engineer. To me, it's a major transparency issue, and it's also a major financial issue. For the people that weren't here last month, it looks like a lot different crowd. For people who didn't see the replay, the city engineer spoke for about thirty minutes. Watched it a couple of times since then because it was just mind-boggling to me. But in summary of those thirty minutes, it basically broke down to, it's a $1.4 million project. Somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000 of it is already paid out. And the project has been done terribly, was the consensus of, I think, everyone in the room. A few takeaways, as much of the work is going to have to be done twice. There was no full-time inspector budgeted for the project. So, the company is either not getting inspections or the city inspector is taking time out of all his other duties to try to do it on his own, or the company is doing their own inspections. And what really bothered me about it, and my phone blew up when I posted about this on Facebook because a lot of people were really upset by it. We didn't get any updates as citizens and apparently also as the council. Maybe someone wants to correct me on that. But it appeared as if the council and for sure the citizens didn't get an update until this was almost a month out. And the city engineer's takeaway from it was, it's a month out. This work is done horribly. We're going to have to do it all. And basically, he's taken a bunch of notes because he's going to have to sue the contractor to hopefully do all of the work again. So, I don't understand how there was such a major breakdown. My takeaway, again, I watched it a couple of times, is Craig, you were dealing with helping people with asphalt repairs. Tim talked at length about what was essentially one person's house. And it was a joke. You should go re-watch that part. But the guy has sinkholes in his backyard, and they messed up the first time. And they were supposed to fix it by Monday. But then, the inspectors show up on Monday, and it was just already filled over, and none of the work was actually inspected. So, it seems like there was a major breakdown from City Hall. I don't know what that exact protocol would be. But I would expect, I would expect that either the mayor asks what's going on or the engineer, if the project is this bad, would go to the mayor or someone that works for the mayor who would then bring it to the mayor. And then, at least the council would know, and maybe they would make it public. But of everything I've ever posted online, I've never got so many messages from people who I still don't, never met them, still not really sure who they are, saying, "How did this happen?" And if you watch the YouTube statistics counter, most videos get around, most of the meetings get like 200 views. That's about where it's at where I posted. It's up to like 800 now. So, this is a major issue. I don't even know who to ask to respond to this up here. I don't know if the mayor would have a response from City Hall, like where the breakdown was. We would really appreciate an update. Also, you're talking about over a million dollars at this point of repairs. Or if any council member can maybe speak to the experience. But I can easily say I represent about forty people who are blowing up my Facebook Messenger within a day of posting that. And we really don't understand. There was no transparency on it. We don't even know really who to ask about this because a million dollars of work was done, and City Hall said nothing about it, apparently to everyone else and certainly to the citizens. So, I don't know who to ask, honestly. But if anyone wants to respond, there's a lot of people interested in it.
I was, the information that was provided to us at that meeting, I would say was the first time that we heard about it, too, Andrew.
Okay.
If you would like, we could request that Mr. Calvin Hightower be at the next council meeting.
There's a lot of citizens who would appreciate that. Because I mean, this is a project that, it's not a street sign. This is our, this is over a million dollars going to our infrastructure. There's going to be years, decades to come. It's still going to affect us. And my main takeaway from that meeting is we're going into hurricane season, and our only hope of having functioning infrastructure is paying to get the work done twice and then hopefully suing the contractor to get paid back for it, was essentially what it took away from the engineer. So, it just seems highly ineffective. And if we got a bad contractor, that's fine. But hearing about it a month out when hurricanes are forming in the Atlantic is not really what people expect from an effective City Hall.
I can give you a little bit of background on it only because I've been back there looking at it. Years ago, and I actually bought a piece of this pipe today. And this was the pipe that was in the ground. And this is what the sewers were infusing. And this is what they were replacing. And this is why it collapsed. And that's about the thickness of the pipe. It's about thirteen, sixteen, some thirteen feet on the ground. It can nowhere withstand the pressure there. So, I was actually with Mr. Bill Lattner. He's an elderly gentleman. And we just got to talking, and he just became great. So, I went to go visit him every day. Every day, we go on in, and we can, so we watch them dig. They got this yard tore up. I mean, it's a disaster. There's stuff everywhere, all over the place. So, I go meet with him one day. The weekend comes by. I miss Monday. I go and meet with him Tuesday. And I show up, and I'm like, the hole's completely filled in all the way to where there's a telephone pole in the ground, which then has a dip down of about three, three and a half feet. I'm like, "Mr. Bill, what happened?"
It's just the ton.
"It's okay. I'll finish." "Mr. Bill, what happened?" He said, "Well, I don't know. I woke up in the morning. The hole was filled." So, I started going around the city trying to talk to people who I thought knew about it. And come to find out, they, I believe it was a fifty-foot piece of pipe that should have been replaced, and only thirty-five feet of it were replaced. But when the real trouble came is when they decided no one inspected it, and they pressurized the lines. Well, on Wilson, the cleanouts are very close to the house. They're not the normal distance of what they would normally be. So, it doesn't take as much pressure. Normally, when you pressurize a line, it doesn't back into a house. This is gonna, because they're very close, with a completely collapsed pipe because they just didn't feel like removing the telephone pole. So, then I did a little bit of homework on the company. Supposedly, this company, Gulf Coast Underground, is literally the worst company in the entire America. And...
That's right.
And, but what baffled me, and this is what, this whole sinkhole was bad in this gentleman's backyard, real bad. And why it wasn't inspected before those pipes were pressurized is what's kind of upset me. And I'm just, I'm like thinking, "Wow, did no one inspect it?" The biggest sinkhole that we have of right now got filled over, and no one inspected it. And then, we jam-piped, and we made sewer fountains in people's houses that were coming out of their toilets. People's bathrooms were covered in feces and toilet paper and everything.
And I think it had a lot to do because there was sand in the pipes. He had mentioned that, that they had plugged the pipes with sand and then pressurized it.
And they didn't repair it. It wasn't repaired. It was repaired, thirty-five feet was only repaired of it, and not all of it were repaired. So, what was, wasn't repaired was just blocked with the telephone pole sitting on top of it. Because they didn't want to move the power service. Because from what I understand, Gulf Coast Underground likes to go in and do the quick fixes and eat up all of the money and put the hard fixes on the side. But by that time, they're out of town, and they've gotten all the money. And that's why I asked Mr. Hightower, and even at the last council meeting, when we came to address pay the bills, don't pay them. There's a lot more to the story that I'll tell you more about in detail. And actually, I'll walk you back there because the residents are still pretty furious. We'll go walk back there and talk to a couple of them. And in the meantime, just so you know, I was back there. There's a house with a big old hole in the wall that has a bad infestation.
Nice. Yeah, it seemed, the contractors seemed incompetent. I'm sure I'm out of time. But myself and all the people who messaged me, plus I'm sure other people who viewed it, would really appreciate those engineering updates.
Yes.
Because we had no idea until it happened.
Agreed.
And from, if you re-watch the video, I don't think any of the council members knew either. So, if that could get put on the agenda, however that happens, myself and a bunch of other people would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll, we'll have something in writing that is not a hearsay. She said, he said, and we'll put it out on...
Ma'am, it wasn't a he said, she said. Mr. Hightower confirmed everything I said.
I'll put it out from the city engineer so that everyone can see what the city engineer says and not an interpretation of it. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, Ms. Rie. You may start.
Evelyn Rie. We spoke at the Flood Protection... Oh, sorry. Using them too loud, anyway. We spoke at the Flood Protection Authority East Meeting this morning, and we thank Commissioner Herbert Miller and Chief Administrative Officer Derek Bays for finding out for us when the work on the front hall road along the levee would start. Derek forwarded Stacy with Wood Materials email to us that said all work on the hall road along the levee will start on July 9th. Wood Materials started the first progress upgrading the old hall road along the levee on July 6th. That was early. We spoke at the June Flood Protection Authority East Meeting and also at the June Harrahann Council Meeting concerning dump trucks driving on the sand between Pit 3 and Pit 4 and then entering the sand pit closer to the residence. We said the entrance to Sand Pit 4 should come directly off the concrete hall road along the river. We asked in our speech at the June 21st council meeting if anyone could please contact Wood Materials about changing the entrance to Sand Pit 4 to enter the pit directly off the concrete hall road, which would move the entrance further from the residence. On June 25th, Councilman Tim Bodier emailed Stacy with Wood Materials concerning moving the entrance to Sand Pit 4. On June 26th, the next day, Stacy sent Councilman Tim Bodier an email that she said he could share with us, which stated, you know, it's been just some times where we just said, "Man, man, man." But I'd just like to kind of read this email from Stacy pretty slow because it's really nice. "We successfully closed the entrance at the front of Pit 4 and opened it at the corner of the pit by the river hall road like Pit 3. As time goes on, when the pump, when we pump again, we will close a gap as much as we can between the two pits. That's where, between Pit 3 and Pit 4, it was a big, wide sand. And so, it's going to be a bigger pit. That's okay. It's going to be closed in right there. And with the sand pits, when the drive, the trucks go in it, eventually, they get further away from the residence and further down into the pit where the walls help surround. Thank you, Councilman Tim Bodier, for contacting Wood Materials for their, and for their fast response to moving the entrance of Sand Pit 4 further from the residence and directly off the concrete hall road along the river. The residents are so glad to see Wood Materials working on grading the old hand, old sand road along the river. And we are looking forward to the grass rug laid back, being laid down and all the open gaps between, gaps being closed with berms and tree curtains to stop the venturi effect that causes airborne sand to affect the residence's property and quality of life." This was such a big thing for the residents here in Harrahann, this sand road in front of the trees. And the openings that caused the venturi effect. And it's been a long road, three years, steadily coming. I don't think we missed one of y'all meetings. Praise God. And just continuing, continuing, continuing. And I, you know, we were, as I said, I think before, we were invited, we went to the ribbon cutting for the hall road back. Some of the residents were kind of upset because, "What about the other road? It's not done yet." And we went, and they asked us to cut the ribbon with them. And that was really nice. And we cut the ribbon with them. And we believe things are moving along. You know, this is great victory for that sand road to be gone. And I had a resident at the corner come knocking on the door and said, "It's making all kind of noise. It's shaking. I think it's shaking my house." And I said, "This is what you wanted." You know, that we're having a little problem with concrete under there, some concrete they had to pick up. I said, "Just be patient because this is, this is really what you wanted. You wanted this road to go to the back." So, we are so thankful to God for what he did in helping us to stay consistent, continue, continue pushing. And I think that Pierce Wood and their company really thinks they got the best sand company in the world. So, we're very, very thankful for what has happened. We hope that they will continue on, and they will put the berms, and they will put the trees, and they will put the grass as they said they would. But we're very thankful also for Commissioner Herbert Miller and Chief Administrative Officer Derek Bays because they've been really kind of keeping an eye on it, too. So, they gave him an operating permit, and they've been really nice about trying to just get some dates for us. And that's been really, really a blessing. So, we were at that meeting this morning thanking them for that, too. So, we are very happy, very, very happy that this is happening.
Thank you. We have made a lot of progress.
It's been a long road, and we got some still to go. And Johnny's got something to say about the mulching compost.
Just one quick second. I got some real positive news today that Woods has bought some property from Construction Aggregate on that side.
You know, we, you know, that, praise God. We kind of had a feeling of that because when we were talking to him at the ribbon ceremony, he was talking about the company and stuff. And then, a couple of weeks ago, we saw they closed. And we were like, "That is really good place to put the mulching compost." But you know, I want to tell you that I look back now, and I say, "How did we make it? How do, how..." There was times of crying. There was times of frustration. There was times of aggravation. But we knew thus, this is why God called us here to Harrahann. And he gave us all the strength we needed to keep, get, pick us up and keep us going. But I know that in the end, that company is gonna, is gonna keep on doing the right thing.
So, they're moving their mulching, you think?
I don't know that they're moving their mulching, and I'm not going to speak in terms of that. But I know negotiations are going on, some of that Construction Aggregate property, if not some, all of it.
Well, I think they're, they're ongoing. And there's a ramp over there that's blocked it. But the thing is, that, that area is right next to their retail area. It's on Jefferson Parish side. It's legal in Jefferson Parish. It's industrial. It's not legal in Harrahann. That law was put in long ago to protect these residents, and it needs to always be treated like a piece of gold. Because don't ever, y'all, please don't ever let it leave or try to remake it. Leave it just like it is. And thank God for that. I'm so thankful for that, for that law in place.
I think that's because they know we have a sound legal case, too, if any movement's coming.
Well, we're not an instrumentality of Jefferson Parish. That is for sure. And that is the only thing that's going to be addressed. But you know, it's time to be a good neighbor. It really is. I want to see some T-shirts with Wood Materials on the back. I want to see some signs out here with flowers.
Let's get the mulching moved.
And be a good neighbor and do something about this mulching compost. Just move it over. You know, we're not going to go down there and take pictures and fuss. Promise. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
John Rie, I guess I don't have a speech now because y'all blew it. But I want to thank our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And Charlie Zarang had the idea of moving that sand hall road from right behind the levee to back along the river. And Dax told us that, looking at the Google map, that there's a sand road back there. And I looked at it, and sure enough. So, we gave, we told Pierce Wood about it, and it took him a while. But DEQ made him see a little bit better, too. So, John Rie, Three Rent Pass. On June 4th, we went to Jefferson Parish 24th Judicial Court regarding Wood Materials versus the City of Harrahann court case. Jefferson Parish Court was waiting for fees to be paid before sending the case to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. We contacted Mayor Tina Moselli and the next morning, we picked up an envelope with a check that we delivered to Jefferson Parish Judicial Court on behalf of the City of Harahan. Thank you, Tina, Ms. Mayor Tina Moselli.
Thank you. I'm sure it felt good delivering it.
No, yes, it did, and we got a picture of it.
You have a picture of it, very good.
So Wood Materials versus the City of Harahan court case was filed in the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals on July the eleventh. Wood Material, briefs for the City of Harahan ought to be filed by August the sixth and briefs for Wood Materials ought to be filed by August the twenty-seventh. So I hope Gilbert's working up his brief right now because we need to get that in just in case, you know? We don't want to take anything for granted. But the residents look forward to Wood Materials illegal compost facility being moved off the Harahan side of the bachelor to the Jefferson Parish side of the bachelor. The compost facility is against the law of the Bachelor of Harahan, but is not against the law on the bachelor in Jefferson Parish. Weeks ago, we noticed that Construction Aggregate Company that's located next to Wood Materials on the bachelor in Jefferson Parish is no longer operating and has blocked off their entrance. If Wood Materials buys this property next to them, it would be close to their retail area and also a lot of room for their compost facility to operate legally. Then sand pits five and six can return back to the original state. Since I am retired, I've been working three years consistently for the residents as their representative concerning the quality of life living along the bachelor. A lot of changes have happened and are continuing to happen. I thank God for giving me much strength, endurance, courage, and wisdom. I'm running for Harahan City Council and I hope that I will be elected to serve the residents of Harahan. I look forward to working for the residents just as all other, in all these other areas. I don't have all the credentials that Tommy Buddy has, but I worked thirty-seven years for Entergy and I do have a lot of experiences with Entergy. And I think I'll be fair on all decisions that I make in the city council. And I've worked with all of y'all and appreciate every one of y'all and I'd like to try to work together even more so in the future. And my wife and I have gone to the Louisiana Department of Agriculture, the Corps of Engineers, the East Jefferson Levee District slash Flood Protection Authority East and Jefferson Parish and dealt with all these issues that we have along the levee. And with all this experience that we have, that I think that we're not afraid to go anywhere. I'm retired, I have plenty of time to do things, so I'm going to be for Harahan. I grew up in Harahan and I'm back in Harahan. I have my dad's property, the Reeve's property, right behind Paulette Zarang's. So I'd like to be here for a lot, lot longer. So thank y'all, God bless.
Hello, Ms. Maigene.
Maigene Casene, forty-six Oak Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. At last month's meeting, a resolution was passed authorizing the hiring of an attorney to represent the police department. The clerk led it by little, by title only, so the public never heard the complete resolution. However, nothing was said about the dollar amount and there was no discussion from the, from the council on this point. How are we supposed to comment intelligently if we don't know what was in the resolution? Please ask the clerk to read all resolutions and ordinances up for a vote in their entirety so the public hearing, so the public will completely understand what was, what you are actually doing and then we can comment on it before you vote. Also, since nothing was mentioned about the cost of this attorney, how is he to be paid? By the hour, the case, the month, or what? What was authorized and is there a cap on the total amount? How much is this going to cost us, the citizens? Since he representing the police department, I would assume this money will come from their budget. Has the council amended the police department budget to reflect this? Or will they put them, put them over the budget? Since historically, the city has only had one attorney to represent all departments, why now do we not only have one, but two, but three attorneys? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just have a few questions regarding, I think to follow up with Andrew. My name's Nick Kirall, live at two twenty-one Pradoles. Is Gulf Coast, are they completely finished with their contract? Do you, do y'all know?
I don't think so, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Okay, because on Pradoles Street, I can assure you that they did not run that PVC replacement pipe. And on that street, there was a hole two feet deep, at least ten feet wide. And with that being said, now we have fresh blacktop, which we greatly appreciate over that hole. So in five years, ten years, what's going to happen? You have heavy garbage trucks, fire trucks, who knows, you know? So could maybe y'all find that out and?
We'll ask him to be at the next meeting, so please come back.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened last meeting, I missed it, but when Andrew started talking, it just brought up a few questions.
That's something like what happened on Wilson, where they didn't fill it in properly and it started sinking, so they had to come back and fix it. So if they didn't fill the hole properly, they're going to have to come back and fix that.
Okay, like I said, I don't know if it's Gulf Coast, if it was a city repair, whose repair it really is, you know?
I got you.
But if it pops up now or it pops up ten years from now, it's still got to be fixed.
They didn't come do any work, you just don't know if it was the city that did it or if it was them that did it.
Right.
A patch, just a patch.
Yeah, I told the people who blacktop and I'm like, look, there is a hole here, so when you're digging, you will find it, what's underneath it? I don't know, you know? I think the city filled it twice, two dump truck loads twice, so I'm not sure. And then as far as the blacktopping, the street was redone, but what about the aprons to the driveways? You still have? Yeah, is that just a time, a different crew, different?
I'll have to get, I asked about it and I didn't get a complete answer.
Okay.
I was, because they needed to get back to me with more information so we'll know.
Get some pictures, man, take some pictures.
All right, well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Eric Chateling, seven hundred Colonial Club Drive. I'm going to talk first on behalf of the, as the president of the Harahan Athletic Association. They have a group of senior women who practice at Harahan Playground. They sent a letter to the Harahan Athletic Association asking for a defibrillator at the playground. I believe most buildings around, I know we have one at City Hall. I mean, she's asking what's it going to take to get it basically at the playground. I don't believe that's, I believe that would be more city capital could probably pay for that. I think we need two of them at the playground, maybe one outside for when kids on the field and maybe one inside. I mean, I know every second counts. Other thing is, I know, this was brought up probably five years ago. And from what I understand was, we need to get training on it. The playground recreation department's going to need to get training on it. The Athletic Association, we're willing to help assist with this. I mean, we help assist with a lot of things at the playground. We basically raise all our money. I just, I would hate to take the money from the playground if we have some money in capital projects to help pay for this. I mean, if maybe we could pay for one, the city pay for one, we're willing to work together to make this happen. I just had this letter, I'm gonna send it, y'all could look at it. I mean, I'd like to have it back, just to give it back to, keep it in our files.
If you wait, if you're going to be here the whole time, I'll, we'll copy it at the front desk and get it back to you.
Oh, I'm gonna bring your copy back, I don't know if I could leak it.
Well, I'm just saying, there's the copy machines available right outside.
Yeah, I could, I'll get it back to y'all, but I mean, and if y'all could pay for the whole thing, that'd be great. But like I said, I mean, we raise money for the playground, we willing to spend every dollar we make back at the playground. I believe this is going to help the seniors, you know? It's going to help who needs it, you know? Of course, the fire department's right across the street, but I'm not in the medical field, but I know every second counts, you know? But the key is to have professionals trained to use this. We looked into some, I do know they have some, you hit a button and it'll just walk you right through. It tells you exactly what to do from what I looked up and.
That's the, that would be the appropriate one for the public.
Yeah, that way somebody who's not really trained to work it, someone, you know? Myself, I'm not trained and all that, but I mean, I think I could hit a play button and try to do what it says. Stand back, that's not my profession. And supposedly, there's someone at the playground, anytime the playground's open, there's supposed to be a city employee there. I totally disagree that that should be the rule, that is the rule, but that does not happen. So us just having someone from the playground trained, it's not going to work. So I believe we need this automated one that'll babysit us right on through. I came to the last five council meetings and talked about a tree in front of my house on a street light. Two days later, a city employee called me to see if we could cut the tree. It was unsafe, we determined, they contacted Energy, someone from Energy came out. And yesterday, someone finally came out, no, two days ago, someone finally came out and trimmed a little bit of the tree. But they do have a crew coming out to trim the tree, so it's on schedule to get the tree trimmed. I just don't understand why it took five months. We need to move forward on things, we need to act on things as they come. A lot of things in the city that haven't been fixed over the last, I'm gonna go deep. Seven years that haven't been fixed are now being fixed. Also, we have the Jambalaya Car Show cook-off. I believe we need to ask for an alcohol permit for October twentieth for that event. I believe it's just a low content temporary alcohol permit.
State the date again.
October twentieth.
And did you talk to Nicole about that too?
We did not, but I'll follow up with, I just wanted to bring it up. We had a meeting last night, I believe, and they put that on my list to bring up. And I'm going to double check my list, I think that's all I have. That's all I have. So yeah, if we could just move forward with that, I'd appreciate it. I know we still have a little time and then I guess we're going to go to the parish and ask for permission to put the signs out. I know this guy was here early asking about putting a sign on Jefferson Highway. I mean, I think it needs to put a sign. I mean, if it's against the law, we'll remove it Monday.
Put the sign, pray for forgiveness.
I mean, we'll get maintenance, he puts the sign Friday, I'm sure we get maintenance to remove it Monday as soon as we can. They're closed Saturday and Sunday, so Monday we'll get the call Friday and Monday we'll have that sign removed. Thank you all.
We just have to toe the line, you know?
Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief, want to announce that I am seeking reelection. I feel very humbled that I've been able to serve the last four and a half years as your police chief. I pledge to you to continue to keep this one of the safest cities in the city, in the state of Louisiana. Thank you.
Mayor, would you mind if I just see a couple of brief comments? I didn't mean to be contentious when I was addressing Andrew about the pipe, but because the city engineer Calvin Hightower, if you go back to the video, does confirm every single thing that I said tonight. So it's not just my hearsay, it's actually words correct directly out of his mouth. A citizen addressed me, I don't know if I should say your name or not, and I'm very sorry that I did not stop by to talk to you. I just didn't think you'd ever want to talk to me. I mean, the way you attacked me on Facebook is, you know, it seems like you just really want nothing to do with me. But if you would like for me to talk to you, I will swing by your house and talk to you anytime, day and night, we can talk for hours, anytime. Okay, so let me talk about Colonial real fast and I guess things can be seen as a double-edged sword and you can skew whatever you want to skew, the way you want it to skew it. When I first supported the plan for the high rises, it was to save the green space. I don't know Louis Larcella, I've never met Louis Larcella. I couldn't tell you what he looked like if he walked up to me and shook my hand. But what I did know is after we developed those high rises in the back, that we would have an executive nine-hole up front and that that green, that would, that space would stay green. So in defense of myself, I was working hard as I possibly could to keep that green space. The second plan that came along was a man named Tony Manzella. He wanted to develop the front fifteen, but wanted to leave the rest of Colonial green in perpetuity. That means forever, the rest of Colonial would have stayed green forever. I supported that plan. Never met Tony Manzella a day in, day in my life before that time that I thought, I thought the plan was great. Wow, we'll keep as much green space as we possibly could. Now, I want to make it very clear that I had no fault in Colonial going under or becoming what it is today, or becoming so much debt and being able to be sold. And I got to tell you, it's heartbreaking to be out there, to watch it be bulldozed and trimmed. I was out there this morning, it was very tough. But to say that I've colluded with any of these companies to take away the green space of Harahan is not true. I've done everything in my power to protect that green space and I'm trying now to do the best that I can to make lemonade from lemons. And I notice it's terrible and it looks terrible now, but you have to remember this, and this is the only bright side of this. At the end of the day, there will be a fifty million dollar tax-based expansion there that will help Harahan in so many ways. It will be unbelievable, it will put us on the map. And yeah, does it suck? I agree, it's terrible. But we have to look at what the bright side is. And I know Ms. Valenti wasn't at fault for that club going over, Mayor Moselli wasn't at fault. They're not, one of these people on his council will have fault for that club going under, but it did. And now we need to figure out how to make it right, how to do its best for Harahan with it. Then you have JW Colonial who's developing the progress. Let me tell you, if I want somebody on the streets of Harahan, I want one of the richest man in Louisiana's friends driving my streets. At least they may see something that we don't see, may see an opportunity. And this city could be in, ready for a boom that it may not have even imagined that could have been there. So I just wanted to make that clear. And again, if anyone ever wants to talk to me about it, anyone wants me to stop by their house, call me. I put my number on Facebook all the time and I'm coming. Thank you.
We will now close. We will now close, address the council. Approval of the minutes?
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on June twenty-first, two thousand.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes?
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by?
I'll second.
Bodie, all in favor?
Yea.
Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have one yea, three nays, minutes are not approved. Ms. Judy, please make sure Nicole does the appropriate things by law that we have to do with the minutes.
Communications, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in June two thousand eighteen and a reading of the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Board on July eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Minutes readings are dispensed.
Approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board of July eleventh, two thousand eighteen, as approved by the Chairman, Mac Medio.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor to accept the minutes?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Minutes are accepted. Resolutions?
Propose Resolution Number two thousand eighteen dash nine, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBGDR Infrastructure Program Funding. Whereas Jefferson Parish has submitted an application for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Infrastructure Program. And whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations require that the City of Harahan certify that these activities for which CDBG funds are being requested are designed to alleviate existing conditions which pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community, which are of recent origin or which recently became urgent and that the City of Harahan is able to commit local funding in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents for the activity on its own and that no other funds are available. And now therefore be it resolved by the Harahan City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that the City of Harahan certifies that the activities for which CDBG funds are being requested for the Harahan Affluent Pumps Project are designed to alleviate existing conditions which pose a serious and immediately threat to the health or welfare of the community or of recent origin or which recently became urgent and that the City of Harahan is able to commit local funding in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents for the activity on its own and there are no further funds available.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. If no one wishes to speak to this during the public hearing, we'll go to council discussion. Ms. Wheeler had some questions right before the meeting.
Yeah, so my only concern is, I know you had replied back saying this was something that we did back in two thousand sixteen and I don't know if anybody can totally have, totally. and I don't know if anybody can totally have total recall of something that happened two years ago. I just wanted to make sure that we did either do a budget amendment or the funds were allocated, so.
It was already done.
I'm not doubting that it wasn't.
Right, right.
Okay.
And like I said, because it was short notice, I didn't have time to.
Well, no, no, it was short notice because I was also trying to go through 77 pages of budgets that we just got to.
The affluent pumps had grant money, and this is what I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, Councilwoman. And we had to give some matching funds, not equivalent funds. I'm believing that it was La Gap that was also supplementing. And this is, resolution comes to us via a recommendation of Jefferson Parish because they were having trouble getting their money as well, and they wrote this first for them, and then they suggested that we do the same.
And Mayor, again, I mentioned to you, I.
Right, I know.
I just want to make sure that before we accept this, this was money that was already allocated.
Yeah.
So.
It's already paid, this is just a resolution to.
Correct, to get the reimbursement. This is the reimbursement.
We couldn't just show them a?
No. This is what the government, the federal government is requiring. So in order to get the money that's owed back to us, this is what, the, this is the recommendation that the federal government had made to both Jefferson Parish and to the City of Harahan, that this resolution would meet the requirement so that we could get the funding.
And it was, it's definite that it was?
Yes, it was a.
It was paid, I don't know what I mean, it was paid, we didn't amend it to the 2016 budget?
So we have proof that it was paid. I'm sure, I'm sure it's done. I just want to make sure everything's done correctly, that's all. And I apologize for not getting this to you today, but with the changes that we had received, it was a lot.
Would you do me a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would email me tomorrow?
Sure.
Because it may take a number of, it may take, may take up to three people?
That's fine.
To get all the documentation together, because if it's.
I will make sure to email you first thing in the morning.
And CDBG, et cetera. There was a lot of things that go on.
So you got a motion adjourned?
I'll second.
I have a motion to defer to the August meeting by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Bodie. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Resolution is deferred.
Proposed resolution 2018-10. This resolution was authored by Councilman Johnston, a resolution calling for a special meeting of the council for the City of Harahan to address financial audits, city finances, audit irregularities, and other issues related to the finances for the City of Harahan. Whereas there have been numerous discrepancies with budgets, funds, approved budgets, and audit amounts in the past few years. And whereas the City of Harahan has been several months behind in providing financial statements to the council and police department, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Harahan, Louisiana, acting as governing authority of the said city. Section 1, a special meeting of the Harahan council is to be called on July, and I don't have a date.
Correct, that's, we gotta discuss the date, see what works for everybody.
2018 at, I would assume, 7:30 PM in the Harahan council chambers and Harahan City Hall. Representatives from Carr, Riggs, Ingram, and the city auditor are requested to be in attendance, particularly Becky Hammond and Philip Rebo. Before going resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote there on was as follows.
Public hearing is now open for this resolution. Anyone wishing to come and speak? If no.
I would request that you add the city finance director to this. Have the city finance director also in attendance.
Also too, Mayor, I see that further down our agenda under new business, we have monthly financials with budget to actual comparison. I would also like to see this resolution amended and put this monthly financial budget to actuals that we have under new business here to be heard at this special meeting. And again, also, I agree with the chief, Linda Lulu needs to be present. That way we can discuss everything from the audit to the budgets to actuals. So Carr, Riggs, and Ingram is here, Linda's present. Because I have, I have quite a few questions about the figures that we had received, and so I would like that added to it if we can.
Well, I would like to motion to make an amendment to section 2 at the end of the section after Becky Hammond and Philip Rebo to add Linda Lulu to this, to that list to be in attendance.
Can you reduce that to writing and give it to Ms. Judy?
Right, right now.
I have a motion to amend the resolution by Councilman Johnston.
Wait, I think also.
Well, that's just.
To Craig, not to, it's on section 1, or I know we have that we're talking about.
That's just a different motion.
I have a motion to amend by Councilman Johnston as read into the record and presented to Ms. Judy. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays.
And what was, do we have to add that?
Amendment is to the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do so, probably. Got a little thrown off because chief got up, but yeah, we are, we do still have.
Oh, it's still open?
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't close it.
Okay, awesome. Jason Haswell, 573 Boise. I had the same recommendation the chief made. I would change it, she does work for you, I would change it from requested to required for that, so that she's here. Thanks.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed.
Okay, so now.
Council could discuss.
Start over?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think you've already, we've already done the motion, so you're fine.
Okay.
We need to vote.
Well, yes, I'd like to change requested, if you need me to write it on that.
We want that one.
To required.
From requested to required.
But just Linda?
For all.
For all of them, okay.
And you had.
Like I said, I know either we can address this when we do new business, but I'm just thinking, I think we should defer the monthly financial with budget to actual comparisons, that's on the agenda, to move it to when we call for our special meeting and discuss it all at that same time, so that way Linda will be here, and so we'll call the reasoning room. But maybe we can address that, I was just trying to, since we're on the topic here at the same time.
I guess you can create an agenda once you have a meeting date, right?
Correct.
We'll get the date first, see what.
Unless we set it here on the agenda.
Looked into the date from my email? Anybody looked in, see what works best with everybody?
What are you shooting for?
Not the 30th.
Just not the 30th, or 31st. Yeah, because 31st is bad for you, because it's the very last day.
Well, if it's at 7:30, I'm okay. I just told, I couldn't do the 3 o'clock that we did that last one.
Being that you require these other people, have you gotten dates that they are available?
I have not.
Okay.
But if we do it, if we, the 31st, I mean, that's almost, that's like nine or 10 days old. I mean, I think that would.
Right, give us sufficient time to.
Well, one's a city employee.
Right, one's a city employee, correct.
Not a city employee.
A city contractor that we pay for service.
We pay.
Right, but I'm just saying, it is a distinction, that's all, I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
The 31st is a Tuesday, is that a court date?
I don't have that in front of me.
I think you're gonna find out first.
If I may suggest to the Gower, there's some kind of smell town hall meeting going on that night as well?
There is, thank you.
Correct, yes, I was gonna get to that at the very end. I apologize, so 31st is not open.
All right, so. Next Friday?
It's gonna have to be, right.
I want to go into August.
Well, I mean, if y'all want to keep July, we can always amend to do August if that works best for everybody.
I'm out of town on the 27th.
Oh, that's the Friday before, okay.
Might want to look at maybe doing first, that week of August. We could always change July to August if that works best for everybody.
August 1st?
August 1st, fine.
August 1st.
Okay, the week is.
That's a planning and zoning board meeting.
Plan zone, August 6th?
August 7th.
Yes?
Okay, the 2nd? Okay. What about next Thursday, the 26th?
I'm good, I can make anything work.
Yep.
26th.
Yep. A motion to make it July 26th at 7:30. Keep it the same time as the regular council meetings.
I have a motion.
The 26th, next Thursday at 7:30.
By Councilman Johnston to make it.
The 26th of July for 7:30 PM.
6th at 7:30 PM.
Yes.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Doctor, I mean, doctor. Councilman Bodie, I must be still thinking about the chief's story from earlier. All those in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays.
And before we move on to the vote, I'd like to actually make a motion to add what Carrie was speaking of with the new business, the financials with budget to actual comparisons. I'd like to move that to that special meeting so it can all be included in one, and we can.
Can we finish with the resolution first?
Well, I was adding this to the resolution.
Oh, you're adding it to the body of the resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
To add also to the resolution, this monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons. So we can do it all in one meeting.
So you want to write it?
You want to write down section 3, how you want to do it?
Well, if, where Craig was talking about, where it says we have numerous discrepancies with budgets and approved budgets.
It's basically stated in here.
Just write section 3.
Okay, we could add section 3 to add.
Oh, you're saying just put it up here? You're being redundant.
Well, it's up here already.
It says it addresses finances, city finances, I think it's, and other issues related to finances.
But if you want to get, that's fine, I have no problem with that. We'd, a motion to add a section 3 to also include the monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons.
You just need to write it down, that's all.
Sure.
I'll second.
So I guess also to be discussed, monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons? All right, so I motion that. And we do.
Okay, wait, wait, you're finishing the amendment?
Yeah, I'm finishing right now. I'm getting.
Because that's the motion, and you can reread it again, and then we'll vote on it.
Sure.
That way we can have it one piece at a time.
If anybody can read my handwriting.
Good luck, right? Watch the tape.
Yeah. If anybody has any problems reading my handwriting, just call me. Okay, I like.
Monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons.
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Amendment passes. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Is there a contingency plan if Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, you know, just worried about their availability, et cetera?
I guess we started with calling a meeting and setting a date, and we'll work from there, right?
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Bodie, you're not Dr. this time. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Resolution passes.
Okay. This is proposed resolution number 2018-11, a resolution appointing someone to the Jefferson.
It's Michelle Gonzalez.
Michelle Gonzalez.
Former director, Jefferson Parish Flood Plane Management Resident, lives on Ray Van, worked for FEMA two and a half years, worked for the state managing hazard mitigation grants. She is the perfect person to.
Okay, to the Jefferson Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan Advisory Committee to represent the City of Harahan designating the composition and duties of the committee and providing for related matters. This one's quite lengthy, do we need to read all of it? It's a whole page.
Please do.
Please do, okay. Whereas the current Jefferson Parish Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 will expire into June of 2020. And whereas a current hazard mitigation plan is needed to receive funding from FEMA for hazard mitigation assistance projects and credit under section 510 of the Community Rating System. And whereas the City of Harahan is vulnerable to flooding and other natural hazards that can cause loss of life and damages to public and private property. And whereas Jefferson Parish received funding under the pre-disaster mitigation and flood mitigation assistance grant programs to update the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan with a focus on CRS requirements. And whereas the development and implementation of a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that addresses the criteria outlined in Activity 510 of the Community Rating System can result in actions that reduce the long-term risk to life and property from flooding. And whereas it is the intent of the City of Harahan, Jefferson Parish, and other parish municipalities to work collaboratively to protect its citizens and property from the effects of flooding and other natural hazards by preparing and maintaining a local multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that addresses the criteria in CRS Activity 510, including Table 510-4, Categories for Flood Plane Management Activities, and whereas it is required by Title 44 of the Federal Code of Regulations, Part 201.6, that a mitigation planning team be identified and play an active role in the update on this multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And whereas at least 50% of the committee membership shall be comprised of individuals outside local government. And whereas the estimated completion date of the hazard mitigation plan update is December 2019. And whereas the City of Harahan desires to participate in the Hazard Mitigation Plan Advisory Committee to meet the requirements set forth by FEMA and the Insurance Service Office. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Harahan, City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that section 1, Michelle Gonzalez is appointed to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Advisory Committee, which terms shall run concurrently with the existence of the committee. The resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote on our list is as follows.
It is now open to public hearing. Anyone wishing to come speak? If no one is here to speak on the resolution, public hearing is closed. Council discussion?
I just got a question because I see that it's planned 2015, which will expire in June of 2020. So this is a new.
Through Jefferson Parish.
It's a new program. Okay.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays.
I realize that, I just realized that it was, wasn't offered by anybody.
That's what I said. It doesn't have, you're authorizing it?
I'll authorize, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Proposed by Councilman.
Usually those are done unanimously, so can we do that?
You want to do it unanimously?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. I know Michelle Gonzalez isn't here. I'd like to personally thank her for everything she has done for the city. She has been a resource to this city that has been invaluable. We are so fortunate to have her live here and have been the director of the Flood Plane Program for Jefferson Parish, and to have such a rich experience and offer her services. So I think she's going to serve us very well, and I'm very happy that she's done that.
Okay. Ordinances for approval. Proposed ordinance number 2018-8. This ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston and seconded by?
Other. Other.
Proposed ordinance 2018-8, an ordinance to place a "Do Not Enter When Flooded" sign on West Imperial Drive, and I have nothing else.
Right, I was asked by the city attorney, he's looking for the proper verbiage to use. So I know we have to open it up for public hearing, but I am going to defer this to next month to allow him to write it up.
Okay. You can.
When you open it up?
She's gonna open in a second.
You gonna open?
Well, if you're deferring it.
Well, I'm going to, but we still have to open it up for.
Okay, all right. We will now open up to public hearing.
Barbara Harney, 164 Glenwood Avenue. I'd like to know why one specific street is designated for a sign, "Do Not Enter When Flooded."
Flooded." Glenwood Avenue floods and water goes in houses, to my knowledge, no houses on West Imperial have ever flooded. There are many streets in Harrahann that are affected by this. Thank God we have a fireman on our street and he will put the sawhorses on the highway, but Glenwood Avenue also floods. We flooded bad in 1995, and I remember before that they had a big flood, boats skipped going up and down our street, and some houses did flood because of traffic going down the street, trucks racing down the street when it floods. So, that's not the only street
Right.
that needs "Do Not Enter When Flooded," because Glenwood's one of them, and I'm sure there are many others. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy Buddy, Stoneley Avenue. The wording of this sign indicates that the sign will be on West Imperial and not debating what was said earlier about the need for other locations. I'm reminded of the sign on Imperial Woods and Jefferson Highway that says, "Do Not Enter During Certain School Hours." The signs on Imperial Woods, you don't see it until you've already made the turn. So if we do anything like this, it may be better to have no right turn during flooding, no left turn during flooding, and maybe give consideration to changing the sign near the mayor's house, because I've turned into that sign before, and by the time I see the sign, I'm looking, I'm making a turn, I'm looking for cars, I'm looking for pedestrians and kids, and then you realize you've made the turn and you've just committed an illegal turn, which is really poorly thought out, so maybe no left turn during certain conditions, no right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed, council discussion?
Just before I do do a motion to defer, I just wanted to bring this up, this was a call into City Hall, and I was asked to, to bring it up, so that's why it's up. I'm not against putting it on all streets, I know McQ, Glenwood, I know all those streets that have terrible problems, but this was just a, a call, that was called into City Hall, and that's why we drew this up.
Before you defer it, I, I think that the city, the council, everyone, we need to really look at our signage and probably evaluate all our signage and, and talk about parking issues, talking about making, where do we want the signs, maybe putting some money into redoing the signs because they need to be replaced. So there are a number of
Yeah, to me, it's, to me, it's, it's common sense. If, if a street's flooded, either don't drive down, or if you live there, you have to go very slow so you don't cause the leaking, but that, that's, to me, it's common sense, but it's not to everybody, so
I always want to get a bullhorn and hope somebody's out there trying to go through the wall. So we have a motion to defer to the next city council meeting for August.
Can we maybe make a, you know, since people are watching the council meeting, maybe put out a statement? If you do have a problem, call in and we'll add your street to this, and we'll make everybody's street.
Ms. Barbara, we got a, I got a call about McQ and Sedgfield also, I put down Glenwood on that list too.
Okay, thank you.
Because I know, a friend of mine lives on McQ, they literally get in their kayak when it's really, so, so I did add Glenwood, so I received a phone call from McQ and Sedgfield.
And people think it's fun to ride down the street with trucks and flood the house.
No, I, I understand, but we'll be sure to add it.
I have a motion to defer by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. The ordinance is deferred. Ordinances for introduction.
Okay. Ordinances for introduction, first reading, proposed ordinance number 2018-9, an ordinance approving the re-subdivision and rezoning of lots one through eight, Square B, Jefferson Park Manor subdivision, City of Harrahann, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Gilbert Kelly and Couturey Incorporated, dated May 4th, 2018. Proposed ordinance number 2018-10.
Do you, so who's, who's sponsoring?
I'll sponsor it.
Oh, okay. You're going to sponsor that one?
Yep.
Baudier? Okay, let me put that down. Alright, proposed ordinance number 2018-10, this is to reordain the contractual magistrate and judge. Do I have a sponsor?
That was Sue.
Sue, okay.
It was unanimous on my paper.
An ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance
If y'all want to be, I don't want to do it unanimous.
No, that's fine.
Okay, leave it to Sue.
Yeah, you can do it as Ben.
An ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance 1457, specifically Section One, whereas the city wishes to protect the city and its contractual magistrate and judge so that fair compensation is incurred and paid as due. Proposed ordinance number 2018-11, this ordinance is proposed by, this is written notification mandated by LSA RS 391310, change in operation. Do we have a sponsor?
Give me a moment, Ms. Judy. I'm looking for my copy of it. This is Sue also.
Okay.
Can Sue sponsor an ordinance if she's not here?
She put it on the agenda.
If she put it on the agenda, she sponsors it. This proposed ordinance is serving as providing the council with written notification as mandated by LSA, Louisiana Revised Statutes.
Thank you, Councilman Benton.
391310, that when there has been a change of operation upon which the original adopted budget was developed, the governing authority shall adopt a budget amendment in an open meeting to reflect such change. Proposed ordinance number 2018-12, this ordinance provided by, this is solicited and unsolicited print matter.
That was by Baudier. No, that was by Baudier, yeah.
An ordinance to establish provisions with respect to the distribution of solicited and unsolicited print matter and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Proposed ordinance number 2018-13.
This is Sue also.
This is Sue, this is proposed by Councilman Benton, as an ordinance relating to asphalt repairs around the City of Harrahann to be performed during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. Old business, there is none, new business is monthly financials with budget to actual comparisons.
I like to motion to take that off of this, since we're moving that to the 26th.
I have a motion to amend the agenda, to remove the item under new business by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, motion is approved.
Back to address the council.
Is now addressed the council.
Terry Valenti, Colonial Club Drive. I just wanted to say that I watched the last meeting, and I pretty much understood the situation with the drainage. I thought it was well explained, there was a lot of questions, there was a lot of input, it was a low bid situation, and they did a crappy job, and, and it's going to, and it's going to have to be enforced, and that would be a situation with any of us that hire a contractor and have a problem. What I really want to speak to is Mr. Baudier tried to speak real fast and bob and weave and go back to the end of Colonial Country Club and talk about how he always wanted to preserve green space. What I addressed to him started with his vote to make the front acreage commercial over the loud cries of the public, not just the neighbors, but a lot of Harrahann citizens that didn't want to lose green space. The people around there, we always knew it was, it was Zoned R, and that the worst possible thing that could happen to us would be that houses would be built there and we would have neighbors. We didn't want neighbors, we liked the green space, but the worst possible situation we were prepared to have. What I said to you was you got up here and alluded to the questions that I asked you about running on your record and what you have ever done positive for Harrahann, and you said that you worked out with one resident something that was going to solve all of our problems, but our problems were created by your vote to make that property commercial. It was created, what I addressed you started with your vote to make that property commercial. You made it commercial in order to put a strip mall there that was promised by the landowners, which they never came through on, you never once called them out on that. I'm not unhappy with the assisted living, I do think we're going to flood, and I do think that there are some infrastructure problems, but it's a far better plan than an empty storefront. But you wanted to bob and weave and go back and talk about how much you tried to protect green space, when what I addressed to you was you getting up here and trying to take credit for helping me out and my neighbors, when you've never once talked to any of us, and you were the one that created the problem, and now we're living with it, and I hope every day through the election, when people ride by and see that construction and the tearing up of green space, that not only was beautiful and healthy for us, but also saved us from flooding, and you did away with it with that vote to change it to commercial, and then you come up here and you get down like a Baptist preacher, excuse me, all Baptist, I, I was Baptist at one time, and you say, "I saved them, I went and I saved them." You created the problem, you voted that time and every other time for the commercial landowners and against your citizens. Thank you. And also, I did not say you colluded with anybody, you were putting words in my mouth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Jason Aspel, 573 Posey. So after the last meeting, we heard the engineers update, I was like infuriated about the amount of money that we've thrown at this contractor, GCU, for shoddy work that they've done. So in an effort to understand the contract, I went to the website itself to look for the document, because it's a transparent administration, lo and behold, it was not there, which is surprising, because it was there at one time. I remember, I recall seeing it before, when I was going through the website for other things. So, this caused me, while I was there, I figured I'd check out some other contracts that they have, and I think it's safe to say that this city has a contract problem. So from the execution, to the award, to the enforcement of the contracts, and I'll just kind of go through some of the examples, I'm still digging through some things, trying to figure some things out, and I don't know who, who's executing the contracts, who's writing the contracts, but whoever it is, they're, they're making some good money for Mr. Bures here, because he's got to litigate all these contracts. So first, just, I'm going to skip the easy target, Romelli, that's too easy, so we're going to skip that and go on to the John Curtis, that was really one-sided when it was first brought up. Everybody else has these contracts, they've got to have, you know, these specific things, Curtis gets the world out from Harrahann, which, I mean, they're great people, right? But why not treat them like every other person in this city, or every other business in this city, that is trying to do something with the city? Several contracts with Ames and Stewart, requiring no full-time inspections, only periodic inspection with none, no inspections on the residential side of things. Amendment after amendment of contracts, sometimes, for instance, last week, there was one posted, there is no change to the contract but for the fee that they're going to receive. It's a $47,000 difference in fee that they're, increase that, that they're going to receive, and the, and the contract amendment specifically says no change under every section except the fee. Awarding of contracts, again, easy target there, but let's talk about Ames, they've awarded tens of thousands of, tens of thousands of dollars of contracts, and they were a big contributor to Mayor, Mayor Micali's 2014 campaign. Web developer agreement with Tyler Phelps, located in Grand Rapids, Michigan, I guess there wasn't anyone closer that could update the website, not to mention the, the fees outside of the budget awarded to legal and accounting. Enforcement of the contracts, so going back to the web developer agreement, valued at $15,000 per year, and I have a little something to read here, I'm just going to read a short thing. This contract was for website development, management, media management, media consulting, coordination of web products, projects across departments, editing, proofreading all web content, tracking report on all site metrics, maintain and develop master content calendar for all web properties, and research and implement new strategies to modernize, modernize web presence. So basically, Mr. Phelps is just supposed to update the website and try to figure out ways to, to keep the city modern. If you go on the website now, at the top, it's still, apparently, it's still Parkinson's Month from April, that's not update, as far as I'm concerned. Then I learned last night, there's several city agencies, or I guess endeavors, that are having problems getting stuff put on the website, the HHA, for example, can't get their, their jambalaya cook-off flyer uploaded to the website. Harrahann Police Department is having trouble getting things put on the website, and the website generally is just not modern, like it's supposed to be. So, now, is all this squarely on the mayor? I believe it is. In fact, with the mayor's trumpeting of the Attorney General opinion a couple of months ago, she's made it clear that contracts are solely within this administration's purview, but it doesn't have to be. You can have help from other people, put reading contracts, reviewing contracts, and looking into things. I don't see why we cannot work together and everybody look at a contract and say, hey, this is a problem, we should think about rewording this, how are we going to enforce this, how are we going to pay these people? It's just my suggestion, and I would hope that you guys can work together to figure that out. Thank you.
Tommy Buddy, Stoneley. I have a comment about the wording shown here for the ordinance for introduction, first reading 2018-9, an ordinance approving re-subdivision and rezoning of lots one to eight, Square B, Jefferson Park Manor subdivision, City of Harrahann, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Gilbert Kelly, Couture, dated May 4th, 2018. As I understand, there's, there's a condition to that, it's not just the, the re-subdivided in accordance with the survey. So, I don't know if that
It's in the minutes.
But it's not here, and this is what the proposed ordinance is. The proposed ordinance should say something to the effect, in accordance with the survey and the conditions that the owner agreed to, which were to put some deed restrictions on one of the lots. And if, if that, if those conditions fail to enter it, then what was agreed by the Planning and Zoning Board, and by the owner, by the way, upfront, a real positive move by an owner to concede to the wishes of some adjoining landowners. So, and I know how it was passed, it was passed unanimously, and it was passed with that condition agreed to by the owner. So hopefully this can be amended, so it's clear, the owner's got to put a deed restriction that says X, Y, and Z on the property, and that the zoning change from residential to commercial is subject to that happening.
You sponsored that, Councilman Baudier?
Yes. But did I, I'm not sure if I was clear, you guys understand the point that
Correct.
That you're not just doing it based upon the survey or drawing, you're based upon the deed restriction being put on the property.
Okay. So at the next council meeting, when we bring this back up, if you don't mind, since you're on planning and zoning, come up, help me rewrite it, we'll fix the wording on it, make it perfect.
That'd be fine, if you want to do it then.
Yes, sir, thank you. Can I get a copy?
I've never, I've never seen it. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much. Address the council is now closed.
Secretary's report for June 2018, total revenue, $577,055.75. Reports.
Chief Walker.
Statistics for the Harrahann Police Department for the month of June 2018. We had 616 calls for service, there were 11 auto accidents reported, 61 citations issued for 91 charges. We had 15 patrol requests. Local arrests for the month were 19 for 31 local charges, 16 with felony, 15 were misdemeanors. Other arrests were 61 for 136 different charges, eight felony, 103 misdemeanor, three cities, and 22 traffic. No murders, no rapes, no robberies, three residential burglaries, no non-residential burglaries, no attempt burglaries, three motor vehicle thefts, one attempted motor vehicle theft, 15 arsonist thefts, and five assaults. Thank you.
Chief Sings, he is not here, Councilman Hewitt?
Yes, I'd like to just take the opportunity to congratulate all of the new candidates that have qualified for public office, and also to my fellow administrative team, and good luck to everyone. I just want to do a special message to the folks that this is your first time running. I ran for the first time in 2010, this is my second term, which will be ending in a few months, but in 2010, I was 36 years old, I had a two-year-old, a seven-year-old, a full-time job as a director at Tulane Medical Center, and I was finishing my master's degree, and I qualified for public office. And so my message to you is that you can never be prepared for what you're about to embark. The streets, the door knocking, the rallies, the meetings that you will go to, the messages that people will tell you of what you should do and shouldn't do. All I can tell you is my message is, trust yourself. However you feel today, and when you leave these meetings, and the good you want to do, and the good you want to spread, and the goals that you have, do not lose them. Be true to yourself and maintain your integrity. There will be tough times, there will be meetings, and there will be people that you will come across that you just cannot get through to. You search for common ground, and you want to collaborate, and you want to fix things together, and sometimes you just won't be able to. But know in your heart that you have to try to do the best that you can all the time. And again, congratulations, if you need anything, I'm here, I'd love to talk to you, I'd love to give you some advice, if I have anything good, but it's been a nice eight years, and congratulations to everyone and good luck. But it's been a, a nice, um, eight years and, uh, congratulations to everyone and good luck.
Councilman Johnston?
Well, yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about the air quality situation that's going on in Harahan. Just a little information about what was supposed to happen today and postponements and stuff like that. They were supposed to have a press conference today, Jefferson Parish. Uh, what happened was the DEQ couldn't make the meeting. So Jefferson Parish in turn wanted DEQ there, so they postponed the meeting and, uh, the press conference, not the meeting, the press conference. That's going to be from Monday at eleven AM. They also have coming with them the DHH, which is the Department of, what, Health and Hospitals. Uh, they have them come in also to answer any questions about sicknesses coming from the odors. They also have a town hall meeting July thirty-first at six PM at the Yenney Building Council, Council Chambers. So that's going to be open, of course, to the public and go voice your opinion and try and get some answers there also. Lastly is that I appreciate all the citizens. I appreciate the support and the votes they gave me last time and I enjoy working for you. I'm running again for reelection and I would appreciate the support and the votes again. Appreciate it.
Councilman Vaudier?
Man, me and Councilman Hewitt have been down a long eight-year road. We have embarked on probably the hardest journey Harahan has seen with Colonial. Um, we have been talked to very ugly, talked to very nice. We always try to work hard, try to find a positive. I've been very fortunate to have Councilman Hewitt, um, as a council co-person to work with. She's been amazing, sometimes the voice of reason. Um, but it is hard. And I had a candidate call me today and I'm telling you, same thing, same message. I said, just, you know, find out the truth. Vote for who you are. Don't be controlled by anyone. The truth is there. It may take a little longer to search for than normal, but it is. And don't change yourself. The truth's there. Work hard, find out what you do. And if you're going to do it, be humble, be kind. And remember that people are asking you to represent them because they need your help. It's great. I mean, everybody knows where I'm at and what I'm doing and what my future plans are. My sons are everywhere. Because I do care about this city. I am running because I care and I love it. As far as August is coming, it means kids are getting ready to head back to school. So, um, please be careful, watch them. Probably my little boy might be one of them kids on the side of the highway riding that bike with no helmet on. And, uh, so I might have to get a correct him. And Mayor Micali, if you do see him come by your house with no helmet on, you got my permission to grab him.
I will, I will.
His name's Buddha. And, uh, so we're going to get him. Thank you very much and we'll see y'all soon. Come to the special meeting, please, 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 um, July twenty-six, seven thirty. Thank you.
Councilman Wheeler?
I hate being last because I can't compete against these little speeches they just gave. So yes, I am also seeking reelection myself. I did qualify. For me, I can tell you, these first four years have been a little trying. I'm sure everybody is aware of that. I hope I have the honor to continue to serve for another four years. Again, I do very much appreciate those who have qualified, those who also seek reelection. Um, public service is difficult. It really is. You are not going to make everybody happy. And as much as you try and try, you're going to make some people happy. You're probably going to make more people upset than happy. But I believe anybody that even attempts public service is a top-notch person in my book. So I wish all the candidates the best of luck. Uh, one of my biggest concerns is I don't want it to turn ugly. We're all human. We all have feelings. We have families. And one thing you say about one is just the snowball effect. Everybody yells. We're a very small town. Everybody knows everybody in this town. And I just pray, Ms. Evelyn, I'm going to come to you for a little divine intervention, that it does not get ugly. There's no reason for it to be ugly. We need to be respectful. I may not agree with one candidate and they might not agree with me, but we can respectfully disagree. And I just don't want it to turn ugly. And there's no reason for it to be. But I wish all the candidates the best. Anybody seeking reelection in those new ones, believe me, I've been there. I was very hesitant myself. When I first ran, I was against twelve people. And there was only two females in that race. We got a lot of women in this one, so we're going to need to dominate, that's for sure. But again, just please promise me it won't, well, let's try not to make it ugly. But thank you. You have a good evening too. And I cannot believe we're going to get out before midnight.
I am so thrilled about that too. Um, I, I truly don't want to make this a political campaign, but I do want to thank everyone who has served, who's willing to serve, who's willing to run, and those who register to vote and take the opportunity when elections come around to go do their duty and do their, uh, their civic duty. It is a pleasure serving the city of Harahan. I hope to have the opportunity to do it again. We will now pay the bills.
Bills paid in May two thousand eighteen. Total expenditures, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents.
I'd still like to go on back to my pay Gulf Coast engineer.
And that was June. You said May. That was June.
I'm sorry. It's June. I'm sorry.
Did you say, uh, you finished? Okay. We've done executive session. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. I think she beat you that time. Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. And we are done.